Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council Meeting of Thursday, November 8th. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Derek Slaughter, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we come to you this evening, once again, to do the order of the city. Lord, we pray that you guide our thoughts, guide our decisions, watch over us, Lord, tonight, and allow us to make the best decisions that we can. Lord, we pray for our country, our world. Heal us, comfort us. Lord, in light of the Pittsburgh tragedy, we pray that you comfort those families, friends, loved ones. Be with them, allow them to know that, Lord, we all in this together. Lord, be with those in harm's way, as always, those fighting to protect the rights that we so greatly enjoy here in America. We thank you for the democratic process, Lord, that we took part in the other day. And, Lord, just as always, continue to watch over us, guide us and keep us. We ask all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of City Council Meeting minutes dated October 25th, 2018. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those?
So moved.
Hearing motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved, so we move to the next item on the agenda, which is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no request for that this evening, so we can move right into our next item, which is a public hearing related to LURDA. And so I will declare the public hearing open. Ms. Young, how are you this evening?
Fine, thanks. We're required to conduct a public hearing because we're proposing to change the boundaries of the LURDA areas when the current ordinance expires at the end of the year. This public hearing was advertised in the Williamsport Sun Gazette on Monday, November 5th. And just a reminder, the LURDA program exempts property taxes on the assessed value of improvements to commercial, industrial, or business properties that are located in designated LURDA areas. The proposed change in boundaries will be based on areas that have been recently designated as federal opportunity zones. Opportunity zones are low-income census tracts that are in need of revitalization. And using these opportunity zones as the basis for determining the location of the LURDA areas helps to meet the criteria of establishing LURDA zones in blighted areas. The proposed Zone 1 is in Census Track 9. The boundaries are the western boundary of the city on the west, Trenton Avenue to Wayne Avenue to West Forest Street on the north, Lycoming Creek on the east, and the Susquehanna River on the south. This census tract includes areas that are zoned for light and heavy industrial. And the next two zones are similar to the areas that are in the current ordinance, but with expanded boundaries to the west, south, and north. The proposed Zone 2 is in Census Track 4. The boundaries are Maynard Street to West Forest Street, to Third Avenue on the west, Royal Avenue on the north, Heprin Street to Edwin Street to Elmira Street on the east, and West Third Street on the south. And these boundaries encompass the area that is currently part of the Park Avenue neighborhood planning process. The proposed Zone 3 is in Census Track 6. The boundaries are Heprin Street to West Third Street, a bump out of Elmira and Edwin Streets, back along Heprin to Little League Boulevard to East Fourth, up to Penn on the west, Sheridan Street on the north, Catherine Street on the east, and the Susquehanna River to Market Street to I-180 on the south. This area is also in the designated East Third Street Gateway area and includes the central business district. The current LURDA Zone 3 is being eliminated. This is an area bounded by Rose Street, Interstate 180, Maynard Street, and the Siedecog Joint Rail Authority Mainline Railroad. The proposed LURDA amendment does not change the current seven-year exemption schedule, which provides a scheduled exemption of real estate taxes of 100% for years 1 and 2, reducing by 75% for years 3 and 4, reducing by 50% for years 5 and 6, and reducing by 25% for year 7 until the exemption reaches zero at the end of the seven-year term. And this proposed LURDA amendment will expire on December 31, 2022. These proposed changes were reviewed by the city solicitor, and ERC has had several discussions and meetings about LURDA, and this proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. As a public hearing, the next steps in the process are to open it up for public comment. We will take those into two parts, and we'll begin with anyone here who would like to comment in favor of the proposed change to the ordinance enacting the LURDA through 2022. So is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on behalf of the proposed ordinance? And if you would, please come forward, state your name and affiliation for the record, and welcome.
Hi, my name is Misty Dionne, and I work with the Center for Independent Living. We work with people with disabilities, and we've worked with Roads to Freedom as a developer to develop a 24 apartment building that will be equipped with smart apartment for people with disabilities to help them transition from the nursing home into their own communities and live independently with a higher quality of life and more control over their environments. This LURDA will help us to be able to continue serving people and keeping them in the community rather than nursing facilities. And so, on behalf of the disability community, I'm here to ask for your support for the LURDA so that we can make this happen for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of the proposed ordinance?
Jason Fink, I'm with the Williamsport Leccoming Chamber of Commerce, and we are in favor of this LURDA and the following and the overlapping of it in concert with the new federal enterprise zone. The projects that would be able to be benefited are hopefully going to be significant in terms of some of the properties and buildings that are within these zones. You look at the census tract that was cited by Stephanie. These are areas of the city that could use this redevelopment to be able to benefit all the residents here in Lycoming County, but in particular, the residents here in the city of Williamsport. You look at the burden that the city of Williamsport has with regards to being the capital city of Lycoming County. You have a fair number of properties right now that are not able to be taxed, and that is one of the things that is a burden upon the city. Hopefully, this will provide you the opportunity to see some incentive to bring in new development here within the community, and in addition, incent those who currently own properties to be able to develop their properties. You have buildings that could benefit from this, especially in the tracts that have been identified. The city is putting a lot of emphasis in certain areas of the community, in the East End Corridor. You know, you look at what is being developed in that area. This will hopefully be able to add additional incentive for developers to step in, especially given the fact that it does overlap with the federal enterprise zone. And looking at the enterprise zone programming, there's some significant opportunities to incite development by developers into these projects. So, we support this. We understand that it is something that is significant and weighty for council because of the fact that you are giving up an opportunity to receive tax revenue based off of these developments. But the good thing about it is you're not giving up existing tax revenue. You're giving up just a portion of what would be taxed for future, and it would only be a limited window. So, with that, we do speak in favor of this project, and hopefully you will do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak on behalf of the proposed ordinance change? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance change? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Hearing a motion and a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to close the public hearing.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nubiallo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the public hearing on LURDA is closed. The next item on the agenda is the ordinance itself. If Ms. Frank would read it in short form, please.
An ordinance amending Article 353 of the Codified Ordinances, the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Ordinance.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance in first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Ms. Young, anything further to add?
I'm not yet.
And I will then ask for a report from the Finance Committee.
Absolutely, although I would cede to Mr. Allison if you'd like to address it, since you're the chair of BRCM, we saw a lot more there.
No, we're on both, and we've worked together, so go ahead.
Yeah, so this was heavily discussed in the Economic Revitalization Committee, but then did finally come for final review before Finance, because that was the only time that it was completely final, was only at a Finance meeting leading up. So, both Finance and ERC were very supportive of the LURDA. I will say, as I said at the Finance meeting, that this particular ordinance is an excellent example of intergovernmental compromise. That is to say that I think the city initially went forward with a concept of a nearly citywide LURDA, with the exception of our residential districts, and a 10-year period. And in conversations between several partners, including the Chamber of Commerce, we wound up with a, we're now contemplating a seven-year LURDA with a fairly aggressive tax abatement schedule, and some slightly reduced zones from the zone that we'd originally thought about. And all of that is to say that I am pleased that we managed to move forward with something and modify it such that it becomes something acceptable to everyone that we, that we're hoping to work with on this project. And even though, of course, there are parcels that all of us would like to see in there, I'm sure that are not. So, Finance did pass this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. The only question that I had that did not occur to me at the Finance meeting, if I could ask it now, Ms. Young, is Section 5 of the ordinance. Are we moving forward with the LURDA if only one of the other taxing bodies supports it, or do we need both of the other taxing bodies to support it to make it a go? I mean, we can always amend it in second reading if that's what we need to do, but...
I believe you're referring to the last sentence of that section, right?
Actually, both of the sentences in that section.
Oh, okay.
Article shall remain in full force and effect conditioned upon the school district of the city of Williamsport and the county of Lycoming enacting similar ordinances. And then the, and it could be and/or if we were conditioning it simply on one, not on both. And then the second sentence, the last sentence in the paragraph, currently reads, should the school district of the city of Williamsport and/or the county of Lycoming fail to enact such legislation. And it would be probably the language then would be, should both the school district and the county fail, then it wouldn't go through. But I'm only asking because I don't know, from the administration's perspective, what it is that we're thinking there. Do we want to continue with the LURDA if we only get one other taxing body participating, or is it...
That was my understanding, is that we needed at least two in order to move forward.
I understand that under the state's authorizing legislation, it can be just one additional if we chose, but then the language that is written here, we would be choosing to only move forward if both went with, if all three went with.
If all three taxing bodies were on board.
So, we could do with two, but the language here requires three. And so, I think your question is, is that the administration's intention...
Is that representative of the intention of the administration, or is that simply something we carried over from the previous ordinance and...
I think we probably just carried it over from the previous ordinance.
Okay, so can I understand, then, the will of the administration there? Do we only want to move forward with this particular LURDA if both the school district and the county are on board, or are we willing to move forward with just one or the other on board?
Thank you for asking.
I think we go ahead, and by speaking to the commissioners in private discussions, they have informed me that they support the city entirely when it comes to this.
Right.
So I think we definitely, we move forward with this.
But I guess my question is, are we moving forward with it whether or not the school district is on board?
Yes.
So that we need to change the language in accordance?
I believe so.
Okay.
May I suggest that we follow your idea of waiting until second reading?
Sure.
By that point, we should have, and just to insert some information, I've also been in discussions with the commissioners. In fact, was it Mayor, two or three weeks ago, you and I and others in the administration met together with commissioners and representatives of the school district to just describe a path forward, also others in the community. And we've kind of discussed, we could do two entities. It's most desirable to do three, because if you only do two, then the tax abatement only goes to, that is received is only for the two that are included, and therefore would be much smaller for the benefit of the developers than if all three went. And so, in our conversation since that meeting, I too have received assurances that this, I wouldn't even call it a compromise, I think it was working out the things that we could, or were all happy with in terms of the length of time, the timing, and the zones that would be included. And I think the commissioners, I agree with the mayor, that I think they're on board. In fact, there was some discussion whether they would take action today or maybe next week. Does anyone know if they took action today?
I don't know that they did.
I'm not sure. But then, next week, the treasurer, Mr. Grimes and I are scheduled to attend the school district meeting. They may not take action, I'm not sure, but at least to make, to help make sure that they're fully educated, because they have a number of new members since the last LURDA was put into place, so that they can make a well-informed decision. And so they may take action next week, or maybe in future weeks. But my point here being that by the time two weeks rolls around and we address it in second reading, we should have a clear picture on whether or not we need to change it. And at this point, it doesn't make any difference, as long as we, if we decide we want to move forward with the two entities, by the time we would make that decision, we'd have a clearer picture on whether we'd need to.
No, I think that makes perfect sense. I just wanted to, I wanted to ask while it was occurring to me so that I could let it slide by next time.
And I think it is, all of us agree in the city, well, I guess I'll find out in a few minutes with my colleagues, at least the mayor and I agree, that it is most desirable to have all three entities in place.
And if I may make one other comment, it's nice to be on the same page at times.
Other comments from members of council? Mr. Allison.
We were very much supportive of the Roads to Freedom project, and it was nice to hear it addressed tonight. But just to make it clear to the public, we didn't structure this just for that project. In fact, we knew the current LURDA was expiring at the end of this year, so we've been talking about this back and forth with the administration and on ERC, about what forms or shapes a continuing LURDA was going to take. And of course, we had some general thoughts, as were mentioned before, but as we got in discussion with the other taxing bodies, this began to take shape and form, and it meets everybody's needs. And we're happy, though, that there is a project that is going to be benefiting initially and immediately, because that kind of gets momentum going in that area of development, and that's what we want to see. And what I'm also pleased about this, the three tracts that we have now, is one includes parts of Newberry, which was not included at all before. So we've reached across the creek to bring in a part of Williamsport that was not addressed before. And the other two areas include our targeted development areas, the East Third Street Gateway area that is well underway and has an anchor project with Lycoming College. And this will enhance that momentum, hopefully. And then the Park Avenue Corridor, which is the name of that project for now, but it may take under a different name in the future that more accurately describes what's going on there. But all those things together, I think, are going to give us a nice plan and give developers an idea of what they can access and some benefits of developing in those areas. So, I'm really happy about it, and I fully endorse it.
Great. Further comments? A couple things I'd like to add into what Mr. Allison said. I think LURDA becomes one tool amongst, hopefully, many tools that we can use to further economic development in the city. And so particularly having zones that match up with other tools. In this case, the federal program that Mr. Fink referenced earlier is a really good part of that. So now we have two tools in the same zones in the same city that can be combined together. They don't conflict with each other. Some people might be able to take advantage of one, some developments might be able to take advantage of the other, and some theoretically would be able to take advantage of both. And that helps to overcome some of those headwinds that we face for development, and in particular, in the zones that have been identified, in places where we have targeted for near-term development. So, as Mr. Allison said, the East Third Street Gateway Project, we are now, right now, perfectly timing this so that it is implemented at a point in which it makes sense for private dollars to begin to start moving in the revitalization of that area. Because the college is turning dirt, the city is about to turn dirt, and PennDOT, it is time for, I would imagine, private developers to begin their planning process. The same thing is going to be true in the Park Avenue neighborhood, because the revitalization plan is approaching completion, as I understand it, partnership between the city and the county and the health system. And so, in the next couple of years, turning dirt in that area should be a viable option. We have activity, hopefully soon to occur, in connection to the Discovery Building. And hopefully, that will help to make that more easily happen. And, but unlike programs like the KOZ, which I'm less of a fan of, even though I've supported them in the past, it doesn't pick winners and losers. These are large zones that are primed for development across many parcels, not specific parcels. And so anybody who could benefit it, can benefit on a business level or even a personal level through these tax abatement programs can do so in those zones, as long as they go through the steps to qualify. So we aren't picking this parcel over that parcel as a result. And some, and I think one of the important parts of all of that is, unlike the past where we've often created LURDA's over a two-year period, I really like the idea of making it a four-year time period, because development takes time. Somebody's got to have an idea, and somebody then has to come up with a plan, somebody has to be able to find funding for that plan, and then you have to build it and complete the project before you can become eligible. So unless you're already in the pipeline, like Roads to Freedom, it may take you four years to get from idea to implementation phase. And so this gives those potential developers enough certainty to be able to really get some momentum behind their ideas to take advantage of this program and to take advantage of all the other opportunities that the city offers. And I don't mean the city government, I mean our town. And then finally, I'd like to respond to, you know, there's some legitimate criticisms or concerns expressed by people that say, hey, you're giving up tax dollars, and that means you're shifting the burden onto someone else, the rest of the taxpayers. And I think my response to that is we're making an investment. We don't know that those, we're not giving up any current tax dollars that we're receiving if we approve this. The value of the property as it stands today would continue to be taxed for any development that occurs under the program. What we're doing is we're investing the potential that we could receive tax dollars for a development that might occur into making it more likely that that development and other developments will occur. So, we have to make a bet, in essence. Will development occur? If development would occur, then we'd be losing out. But I'm thinking that we will receive more in benefit over the seven years, and definitely, we've seen an analysis, over a 10-year period, than we would have received over that same 10-year period without the program. And that's regardless if this tool, the LURDA program, sparks one additional, or two, or 10 additional developments over the next four years. So, I'm with Mr. Allison and others. I think that this is a, one more good tool in the toolbox, and one renewed tool in the toolbox to help drive economic development in the city. Mr. Henderson.
Just a question. How do potential developers learn of the LURDA program? Do we advertise, how do they...
I think when they apply for a building permit, there's a clause at the bottom of the permit that says you may be eligible for LURDA. Come to the Community Development Office and get information.
So, more or less, they kind of stumble across it?
Well, once they, once they apply for their building permit, yeah.
Right. Would there be any value in, you know, using, advertising this in some way, and, you know, getting the word out?
From that planning standpoint, you might want to know about it before you even come up with the idea.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, put it this way, in order for it to be of any benefit to the city, you want to know about it before you come in for the building permit.
Yeah, exactly.
And they might not be coming in for a building permit otherwise.
And it may be that, one of the places where that, those, that information can make its way out is through some of the work that the chamber does. But I'll let the chamber speak for itself.
It should also obviously be a banner on the city's website in some area or another. It should, yeah.
Right. Sorry, Mr. Henderson. Let me give it back to him here.
No, that, I mean, that is, I think, a valid concern for us. If we want to do this, we want to use it, we want others to be able to take advantage of it. We're always talking about how we need to attract people to our city and developers to our city. And so, you know, to advertise this, I think, is really important for us to do. So, we'll look for ways to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Ms. Allison.
Well, I think that's an interesting point that raises a larger point, at least in my mind. Dr. Williamson referenced that this is one of the tools in our belt to attract development and industry and anything in that area. So I think we need, we need a better belt. We need a marketing strategy that includes this, but other things as well, that's intentional, not just, you know, maybe we attract somebody here for this and somebody for that, but that we have a package that we can present that's attractive and easy to understand and meets different needs for different kinds of developments.
In fact, I was, just for completely separate reasons, and city government was with a, at a dinner with an attorney who is, does quite a bit of land development legal work, not in this immediate area. But we were telling this attorney about all of the things that have been accomplished in the Gateway area in terms of the revitalization planning process, of the partnership between the college and the city and the county and the state, and the kind of anchor project that you mentioned. that you mentioned earlier. And one of the things he very much emphasized is, now we need to package that together, have a document that's clear and straightforward that tells that story. And then also talks about the other things that might benefit a developer, and a developer could take advantage of to, do the, it's not, some people think of it as winning and losing. In this case, it's winning and winning. It would both benefit the city in all of the various ways it can benefit the city, quality of life and tax revenue included, but also make a project more profitable for the developer, and therefore more desirable. And so it was interesting that just this week I was having that conversation with somebody who brought that to my attention from an outside perspective, that we need to have a better belt to sell our tools through with. So, good point. Other comments or questions? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And we are definitely on the same page when it comes to this. And I believe all of us need to do a better job in telling our story, our positive stories of all the developments that have occurred over the last several years. This website will tell some of our stories. This website will also include the plans that we've done in regards to trade and transit one, two, connect Williamsport, et cetera, Park Avenue Plan, speak about East Third Street Gateway, to get that message out. In addition to that, we've had discussions with Jason and the chamber in regards to marketing. As you are aware, the administration and council were on the same page when it came to the planner's position. And we planted a little bit of dollars, okay? Actually fifteen thousand, which is something, but it isn't major when it comes to putting a plan together. We still have some dollars left over, and in discussions with the chamber, it is our hope, and I want to talk to ERC about this as well, but we've had preliminary discussions for 2019 to work together to come up with a marketing plan for this new area and for Park Avenue as well. Because we're going to have a plan for Park Avenue from the consultants, okay? But you have that plan, we have to get that out. So how do you get that message out? What type of materials do you send? Who's your audience? And we want to discuss that. So at the next ERC meeting, Councilman Allison, if you could put that on the agenda, we'd like to discuss that a little bit more so, as well with Jason. Thank you.
I think that's a good plan to go forward with. We need to be able to put into people's hands, and honestly, I don't know what form that is, but I'll call it a document that says, here's, here's how doing business in Williamsport is easy and can make you successful. Other comments or questions on the ordinance in first reading? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading, and hopefully we'll know more about the other taxing entities by the second reading. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance also in first reading amending the 44th year of CDBG funds. Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amend 44th year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance in first reading?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second? Mrs. Yen?
Yes, this ordinance amends the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Budget to reflect an additional seventy-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars that we received from HUD this year. The amendment also accounts for three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars of additional program income that we've received so far this year. With the extra funds, we're proposing to allocate sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars to the 2018 Street Reconstruction Project. And with the additional entitlement funding, we're allowed to increase our 20% admin cap by fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We're proposing to use these funds to engage a consultant to prepare the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing. This is a document that's required of HUD entitlement communities. And we'll be preparing our five-year consolidated plan next year, so I think the timing works out very well to make a plan to update the city's fair housing document. This budget ordinance amendment was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy?
Finance did review this and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. There's not much to note except the exciting fact that, for once, the amount of home and CDBG funding that we received has gone up instead of down. We've gotten, you know, we, for, for as long as I've been on council now, we make a plan every year for how we're planning to spend our Community Development Block Grant Funding, but don't actually find out until a minimum of six months later how much we got, and then inevitably it's slightly less than we were anticipating, and we have to figure out some way to shrink our wants to what we have. And this year, for the first time, there's more money. So that's a pleasant, if small, surprise. And that being said, the decision to put much of it into streets and then a small amount of it into a consultant to help with an update on something that we needed to update within the Community Development Department seems like a wise use of something that won't obviously generate ongoing cost to the city that, you know, but the money will be utilized, there are needs and needs that we have that won't recur for a while, so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading. We'll see that again in a couple of weeks. Next item on the agenda is ordinance for the 45th year CDB budget. Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance, 45th year, 2019 Community Development Budget.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second to approve that in first reading? Mrs. Yen?
Yes, this is the budget for the city's 2019 Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds that are funded through HUD. And we're basing our 2019 allocations on the actual amount of funds that we just talked about that were awarded in 2018. So we're estimating that we'll receive a million, eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars in Community Development Block Grant Funds, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars in Home Program Funds, and thirty thousand dollars in Home Program Income. The proposed expenditures include three hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars for street reconstruction, seventy-five thousand dollars for the removal of architectural barriers, hundred and ten thousand dollars for the Brandon Park Banshell improvements, hundred thousand towards City Hall accessibility improvements, and that's to include ADA compliant upgrades to the current fire alarm system in City Hall, and thirty thousand dollars to fund Phase Three of the American Rescue Workers Restoration Project for the building located at 643 Elmira Street. And the final line item in Public Facilities is Public Facilities Program Delivery in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. This represents personnel costs that are associated with delivering the program. In Public Services, we're proposing to fund the Lycoming County SPCA for seven thousand dollars to continue its voucher program. That should be pretty familiar to you, that's something we funded for quite a while. And we're also going to fund Fire Tree Place, six thousand dollars to offset wages for trained counselors who work with youth for their after-school program. And in Public Services Program Delivery, we have three thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. For Housing Rehab and Preservation, we're funding our owner-occupied, single-family housing rehab activity with thirty thousand of CDBG funds, seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars of home funds. This program helps eligible homeowners make code and safety repairs and improvements to their homes. And our handicapped accessibility rehab program will be funded with ten thousand of CDBG funds. And a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, seventy-eight dollars will be allocated for the program delivery costs for the housing and rehab activities. We're budgeting thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars for our home assistance activity. This is our 15% reserve for CHODO funds. A project will be undertaken by one of the city's two certified CHODOs, either Lycoming Neighborhood Development Corporation or Greater Lycoming Habitat for Humanity. We are budgeting twenty thousand dollars of CDBG funds for code enforcement activities that take place in established code enforcement areas that are also low-income areas. We're budgeting fifteen thousand dollars of CDBG funds for blight elimination. This is an activity that will be for the demolition of those properties that are determined by the Codes Department to be blighted. And for blight elimination program delivery, two thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Both of the CDBG and home programs are subject to admin caps. CDBG is 20%, home is 10%. We're going to budget two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars for CDBG admin and twenty-three thousand, ninety-six dollars for home admin, and these budget amounts do adhere to the estimated cap requirements. The total budget for both the CDBG and home programs, including program income, is one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. And this 2019 Community Development Budget was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy?
Finance did review this and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We had the opportunity to speak to members of the three nonprofit organizations that are receiving funding in this year's Community Development, in 2019's Community Development Budget, the SPCA, Fire Tree, and the American Rescue Workers. And that was actually quite nice. I can't speak for all the members of council, but I have not been in contact with the Fire Tree Place program as much as I would have liked, and it was, it was nice to have an opportunity to talk to, was it?
Janita Williams.
Yeah. And we discussed the fact that, well, actually, that Fire Tree, as are all three organizations, is always in need of volunteers. But there was at least a little bit of networking then at the finance meeting that will hopefully connect Fire Tree with perhaps some students from Lycoming College, Dr. Williamson, to help out with some of their after-school tutoring needs. That said, you know, we had some discussion on the expense of the Brandon Park Banshell and the improvements that the city is looking to make there, and also the fire accessibility issues that we'll be addressing with a hundred thousand dollars in Community Development Block Grant Funding that don't even begin to address the other accessibility issues we have here in City Hall. But all of that said, it's a, it's a good budget that seems to, as it always does, stretch a limited amount of funding to a number of far corners of the city. So we sent it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Henderson.
Thank you. I just had a question for codes. I know last year we, we set aside fifteen thousand for that demolition. How's that compare with, with what our actual need is, just out of curiosity?
You usually get demo one structure with that money.
One.
One. Comes in the average of ten to fifteen thousand is what it usually takes to take a building down. Depending on the size and the load on average, that's what it is. So there's probably about ten or twelve of them out there that should be raised. But we usually get one through redevelopment, and then I have usually enough left in my team still to get another. So we can get usually two a year.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that get beyond that point, that you just, it's going to cost too much money to try to bring them back into compliance.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, just curious.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Katz.
You know, you look, you look at what we are able to get financially here, but when you look at the larger picture, it's like Fire Tree, like you discussed, Ms. Mealy. They're doing after-school program for 48 kids, which is not, you know, it's not a lot of money to go to this. And what they do with the after-school programs, they're so needed in so many different areas. And you go into the American Rescue Workers, everything that they do, and such a limited amount of money that we're able to give. I'm glad we can give something towards these organizations because they bring so much to our city. They really do. The benefits far outweigh what little money that we do give them. And it would be wonderful if we could give them more.
Other comments or questions? A couple that I had that are not specifically to the CBD, but that address the money that gets folded and some of the others. And I know this, some of this is being handled at committee level with council, and so some of the members of those committees may be more aware than some other members of council. But, you know, especially with City Hall improvements and with Brandon Park Banshell improvements, you know, I think if, if council at some point could get an updated report, kind of a comprehensive report of funding sources and plans for those funds in the totality of the project at both places, you know, not all at once, but maybe, you know, every meeting or two, one of those or the other, just so the whole body of council can get a picture of the evolution of plans. You know, I know a number of us get questions, for example, about the City Hall improvements where, because of the way it's discussed in the paper, it sounds like small parts of what the overall plan are being funded by the total budget that's allocated for what needs to happen at City Hall. When the meeting itself was just about a piece of the overall plan, I think it would be good for the city as a whole if council could hear and then it could be reported in the newspaper or be seen on TV. Okay, well, the ramp or the accessibility to go along with the infrastructure, to go along with some other things, and the funding for that will be paid for from the funds that have already been borrowed along with the CDBG funds. Here's what the plan is and what we can accomplish in the next year, or the next two years, or the next three years to get City Hall where it needs to be. And similarly, there have been a lot of moving parts for, it seems like, several years about the reinvestment in Brandon Park. And some of that is CDBG funds, some of that's DSC and R funds, and I think that's, some of that is other funds as well. Which of those funds is going for what? Which part is yet unfunded? And what is the timeline for actually seeing the project started and then completed? You know, I think both of those are addressed in this budget, but also have other budgetary implications, both from grant funding and maybe from localized funding, general fund dollars. And so to see it from a big-picture standpoint, each of those projects, I think would be really useful. I know it would be for me, and I think it probably would be for the public as well. So I thought I'd bring it up while we were talking about another small piece of the overall picture on those projects.
Yep.
So, thank you. Mr. Henderson.
Just one more question about the spay-neuter program. I'm thankful that we can, you know, really help with this program. And I see for the last 10 years, we've been increasing that amount every year, and I would assume, I'm hoping that the program is becoming more and more successful. I don't know if they gave any kind of a report as to how that program is going.
They do. They give a report with a graph that shows what's happened over the years. They actually saw quite a decrease for a while, and I actually called Vicky Striker at the SPCA about this because their request was more than what they usually ask for. And she said they've just seen a huge increase in the stray cat population. And so what they'd like to do is be able to have more money to do, give more vouchers. They said it's never a problem getting people to come in and get the vouchers, and they're able to find eligible people because they have to be low to moderate income to qualify. But for some reason, and they're trying to figure out why, they had a large increase this year. So that's why they asked for a little bit more money. But they do give a report, they give a graph, and she keeps us up to date on the progress.
Yeah, I think that need is somewhat endless, really. It's just, it's a great need in our city. We've talked about it time and time again at Public Safety, and the, you know, the cat population is just a real, a real issue. So I'm glad that we can do something, and increasingly more and more each year, to fight back with this big problem. So thank you for that report, and I'm thankful that we can continue to increase those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
On the stray cat issue, I'm not sure if there's anything we can do municipally as far as outreach goes, but I can, I could name three. far as outreach goes, but I can, I could name three places within a block of my house where people are feeding strays. And I think that's a good chunk of the issue. You know, not to be heartless, not that you don't want to take care of animals that are in need, but when it just begets more animals in need, then of course you start to have a problem. So if, I mean, even if we could, yeah, frankly, I'm not sure how to deal with it. I'm just putting it out there that I think, you know, part of our problem is the generosity of the people in Williamsport towards stray animals, which is a lovely thing, but on the other hand, is creating a larger problem for us to deal with. So if there were suggestions, if it was something that we could look at from a codes perspective or something like that, I'd be open to discussing it.
Mr. Henderson, or let me, let me, Ms. Noviello.
Just as an example that I know of, I know that in the Covington area, that they called upon all the many veterinarians out there to voluntarily spay or neuter cats that were brought in. And then they were actually released back out on the streets. Because of their lack of ability to repopulate, within two years' time, they saw a greatly noticeable difference in the number of cats in the area. That doesn't mean necessarily we want to put a whole lot of pressure on our veterinarians around here, but it would be nice if somebody would consider that kind of a concept. It would also relieve a little bit of responsibility on the SPCA, and maybe those monies that we provide them can be done, used in some other way that was equally as necessary as the cat. Difficult with cats because of their freedom. Most people that have cats, if they let them outside, they don't want to put a collar on them because they're afraid they're going to get hung up somewhere. A lot of elements associated with that, but it's, there's no doubt that it's an issue. I would add on to that, the issue that we forgot with dogs. We've had a couple incidents just delayed in the last several months here that have really brought that back to the fore again. And once again, I've been calling for some type of a response in the city with regard to, even if it's a part-time position, for some type of an animal control operator here. We've talked about that a few times on Public Safety as well, and it seems to be a recurring theme. Maybe time to address this without too much more to add. This is one step in that direction, I think. We thank the SPCA for their services, no doubt.
And after this week, I would add bobcats. I don't know if you've heard about that.
That's on your campus now.
Yeah, there was a bobcat captured on the LeCombe College campus this week. Mr. Henderson.
Just to kind of report to some degree from Public Safety, I have met with Ms. Striker, with the SPCA. We've talked about some kind of a pet ordinance, a cat ordinance, something like that. Part of our issue, just to put this out for people's benefit, part of our issue is enforcement. The SPCA is loaded full. And if we were to begin actively enforcing a cat ordinance, the big question is, what do you do with the cats? And just taking them to the SPCA and dropping them off is just not an option. So it's a complex issue. It's a, it's a big problem, but it's a complex problem. And so I think there is, you know, more coordination that we can do with the SPCA, and I look forward to kind of walking down that road this year, this coming year perhaps. But it's just, it's a difficult issue. It's a tough issue for us. But we are aware of it, and we're looking for some options to deal with it. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance carries in first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing extension of time for paving. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing the extension of time for the paving of certain street projects by the city of Williamsport for the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second for that resolution?
Don't move. Second.
Hearing motion in a second. Mr. Jardi, how are you this evening?
Good. Yourself, Dr. Williamson?
Good.
Members of council, what you have before you is a request from the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority for certain streets within the city to have a paving extension, which would start April 1st of 2019. I have attached a copy of the resolution. There are three streets. It'll be Devon Road from the top of the cul-de-sac to Poco Farm Road, Spring Lane from the dead end south to Grappling Boulevard, and the unnamed alley between Royal Avenue and Mount Carmo Street west of Wildwood Boulevard. This came about due to a request by the water authority, got ahold of Mark and also Adam. They went out and took a look at the roads. It's going to better benefit the citizens and the city if we do a joint effort and do it in 2019, because the roads on the other side, typically the gas, the water authority is going to pave half that road. The other half is not paved unless we decide to go out and do it. The roads are also, those other sides of the roads are in bad shape. It would benefit us to do it all at one time. It saves money when we can do it all at one time. There's only one setup charge. You get a better surface. You don't have that center seam as bad as you notice on some of the roads. So our intent is to work with the water authority and extend this till 2019. I did add one clause in there, which was, if you remember correctly, you also approved this once before for the Art Street project. What we said in here is that we want, we're at City Council, City Williamsport shall require milling and paving of this project be done 45 days after April 1st. So they have 45 days from April 1st to finish these three projects and Art Street. Okay? They're also going to, on Spring Lane, they're going to have to cut everything out, bring six inches of base up to the top of the road, which we require if something's going to set over winter. And they're also going to down on Brandon Place and re-tar, re-seam the joints that are down there. That was also brought up at Public Works. And this was reviewed by Public Works, and they brought it to City Council with a full body recommendation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Katz.
Yes, this did come to us, and the good thing that's happening here is that we have such a great working relationship with the utilities at this point. So therefore, the doors of communication are going, swinging back and forth. So therefore, we see what has to be done, and we get it done to the benefit of our taxpayers. The thing that really is bothersome at times is a lot of these things come in at the end of the year. And every year, we say, can we stop this? Well, you know, you're trying to save money, you're trying to save projects that are already behind schedule, especially when you have your utilities with the gas and water. And this being the water, they're trying to, they have a lot of pipes that they have to get repaired at this point. And so therefore, for us as the city, to work in conjunction with them is a great benefit. The other thing, too, is because we're communicating so well, these projects will get done a year ahead of time. And from what I understand from both streets and parks and also codes, when you have your streets that are milled and, what's the word I'm looking for? Cammed and paved.
Overlay.
The overlay, thank you. That it's better for it to sit a year. Therefore, it settles, so therefore we get a better job done all the way around. So therefore, this being done, even though some of our citizens are going to say, why are they doing this so late in the year? We question that at times, but you know, it's going to be okay. Come the, after April 1st, they'll wait 45 days to get this finished, and we'll have better streets all the way around. Like they said, when these streets are done halfway and you have that seam down the center of the road, it creates a problem. Where moisture gets in, your streets start to crack and break up again. And of course, then everybody wants to know what the problem is. So doing it this way, getting the whole street done at once, is a great benefit all the way around. And yes, we did pass this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Ms. Noviello.
There's no doubt that these kind of requests have come to us routinely, seemingly, over the last several years here. And it's frustrating, as Mrs. Katz notes. But at the same time, you know, we've asked the citizens for a little bit of patience. There's a little bit of rough road to deal with, no pun intended, until we get this finished completely. We have to bear in mind that the water authority is under mandate as well, as I think I mentioned it last time we were together, and we certainly understand what mandates mean. So, you know, we understand their position in this. It does get frustrating, but this particular year, I think, they have a little bit of a cover for their concern in the sense that the weather was so bad, day after day, and sometimes several weeks at a time. Certainly, when you're talking outdoor projects, particularly paving, above all other kinds of concerns, that's going to put a stop to that kind of work. The crews that are doing the job, I think, are doing a great job. I think the water authority's really stepped up to their plate. As Mrs. Katz said, that our communication level has really been enhanced over the last several years. In the process of that, we've gotten some things that we've kind of wanted, and they've gotten some of the courtesies that they are looking for from the city as well. But I think that they owe a thanks to the citizens for being so patient in all this, and that we recognize that ourselves. And hopefully, within the next several years here, we'll have all this at a point where everybody's as satisfied as they can be. And we're working at that, so we're on the way. Thank Joe for his work, his involvement with the water authority. And we don't have any water authority reps here tonight, but I would be thanking them again as well for their assistance in all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries.
Dr. Williamson, before you go any further, I did add, just real quick, I did add a copy of the street restoration requirements, which are basically our in-house policies, how we, okay? We did change one, it's going to, and I have to change the revision date on it. I just wanted the council to notice, it's back on number 11, the second page. It used to be that any time they had a project being done during a certain period of time, it was approved by the mayor or Public Works. Technically, by law, it should be recommended by Public Works and approved by City Council. So that's the reason I changed that number 11 down there. So we're going through the proper procedure. If we have an order set up that you approved, you are the ones that, if I'm correct, you are the ones that can only change it, not Public Works or not the mayor. It has to come through the body. So I wanted to make sure it was written properly. That's the only reason you have those with you.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, then, is demolition for 1214 West Fourth Street. Mr. Jardi.
Yes, what you have before you is a request for demolition to property located 1214 West Fourth Street, which is located in the CC Commercial District. The structure is currently vacant and has been for several years. The owner, at this point, wishes to tear it down and then combine these two lots, combine this lot with two other lots for future commercial space. This, and you'll see I have attached a picture of the building, this is one of the few buildings in the city that's not hooked up to the sewer. It has a septic. It's not feasible to hook it up to the sewer because its sewer doesn't run anywhere by it. And the septic system is no longer good. So it really should be torn down. It is a large commercial space that could be developed when they combine the three lots. We do have a representative here, if you have any questions of him or myself.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this demolition request? Hearing motion in a second. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy.
Is there a reason why we shouldn't address all of these properties somewhat simultaneously?
They're in separate locations.
Well, they are in somewhat separate locations, but not dramatically. I guess my only question is, does this property or any of the following properties, none of them lie in the historic district, correct?
What's that again?
None of these properties lie in the historic district, correct?
No, absolutely not. If they did, it would be a whole different ballgame. I'd have to go through the story.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, right. I understand. I just wanted to be absolutely clear.
Yeah, no, they're outside, that's one thing I always check, they're outside the boundaries.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, yeah, otherwise, they're, yeah, that's really all I was curious about. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Katz.
That seems so strange that that section there is not on sewer.
Yeah.
That really is bizarre.
There was actually another house, I believe, next to it, same situation. It was tore down several years ago. It's because there's not a sewer main that runs in front of the property. If a sewer line runs in front of your property, you're required by law to hook up to it, okay? But if you have to jump across another property to get an easement, you've got to get an easement from that individual. If that individual doesn't want to give you an easement, then you have a septic system.
I've heard this from you before, that there's, there are several properties throughout the city that are on septic.
Yep.
Which, you know, you just don't.
You don't think that, but yes, there are a couple.
Yeah, I really don't. It's going to be good to see if you do something with that property, because when you're going down Fourth Street, it just looks so desolate there. So it'll be very good to see something go in there. Thank you.
It'd be interesting to know the history of the shape of those parcels right in that area.
Yes.
They're just bizarre, really.
Correct.
Have probably been that way for 100 years. Mr. Noviello.
If I missed it, excuse me, but what happens if we commercialize this property and the sewer's still not there?
Well, what he's going to do is, he owns three properties in there. The other, the other property he has is eligible, he can connect to the sewer. So now I'm going to have one parcel, a large building that would be connected to the sewer line. Here, this parcel can't because it's got to go through a couple parcels to get to the sewer line.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
Other comments or questions? Just to help me understand that, I'm looking at the map, or the GeoPlan map. And 1214, actually, does, does that, the map cuts off, does that extend all the way to Fourth Street?
Yes.
Okay. And then 1208 is the second of the three parcels, I think. And there seem to be, the lines look bizarre, so I can't tell which ones are.
You have 1214, 1208, and I believe you have the one that's on the corner, there's no parcel number on it at all.
Okay.
That's the other one.
And the ones that are around Ann Street are?
That whole piece there that's on Ann Street is owned by the pajama factory.
Okay, I had forgotten about that.
Yep.
And then the tiny triangle closest to Fourth and Greer that runs east-west?
Yep, that's owned by them, too.
So that's a, yeah, the fourth parcel, then, in that.
Yep.
Yeah. And so the intention, then, is to combine all four of those into one property. And do you have specific plans in the works? You don't have to say what they are, but is this a sort of someday commercial or in the next year or two, commercial development?
I would say someday commercial. We have some good interest.
Sure.
So.
Okay.
We have a property around there.
Yeah, of course. I didn't know if we would, could be looking forward to something specific being announced next year or something, but not yet. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Allison.
You may not know, Mr. Jardi, on the west side, there's a sliver that cuts in there across 1226.
Yes.
Where does that widen, or?
I have to get back to you on that one. That's a new one to me. A lot of these lots up there are like, Councilman Williamson is saying, they're weird for some reason. I think it's because the railroad line went through there one time, and that's probably part of it. That sliver may continue on down and be part of another property. Okay? But I'd be more than happy to find out and let you know.
Oh, not unless it's interesting. Thank you.
Yep.
I have to say, along that line, I actually would be somewhat curious, because I'm looking at across the street, which I know is like three or four buildings in a row, and yet it looks as though somehow the ownership of the actual buildings is on your plan? You have what used to be the Bojangles Restaurant there on the corner, Safron's somewhere in the middle, and there's an auto shop on the end of that block.
Right.
I'm trying to figure out how we have that many parcels in what looks like one solid section of buildings.
You have that downtown.
That, yeah. That 1165, that's off of Chestnut Street.
I think she means 1172 and 1173.
Yeah, 1172, 1170.
Right, well, and then whatever that, I guess maybe this is just a much larger, like, whatever's extending you behind.
And that piece behind there.
1172, which I thought, I thought it was a building all the way back to Chestnut Street, but I guess I'm wrong.
Nope, there's a, it's an L shape, and it has to be a right-of-way probably for access to that lot.
Yeah, okay, wow.
That comes down further, to come in from behind.
Yeah, you've got to pull up the satellite on that one, I'm really curious. That was not my recollection of how that whole block looked, but interesting. All right, that's all. Apparently, we should look at these more.
Yeah. We all should get a GeoPlan subscription.
We have one down at the office. Anytime you want to stop in, we're happy to bring it up for you.
All right, great. Any other comments or questions? Any way we can clean that up, we'll happily contribute to, I think.
Okay.
If there are none, Mrs. Frank, on the request for demolition of 1214, just to clarify for the record.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and so that demolition is approved. Next item on the agenda is demolition request for 1234, or 1234 Vine Avenue.
Yes, this was on the agenda for tonight. The owner requests to withdraw this off the agenda for tonight, so it's no longer, if we can have it, just withdrawn by city council.
I believe so. We don't have a motion or a second, so we can just withdraw it on your request. So we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is a demolition request for 1270 Vine Avenue. Mr. Jardi.
Yes, request for 1270 Vine Avenue is the CC Commercial District. It's the same owner. Structure was used as a rental and is currently vacant. Grass will be planted after demolition. Future development of this lot with 1264 Vine Avenue for a parking lot for the commercial business located at 316 Ross, yes, Rose Street. There is a building across the street that has no parking at this time. They're requesting to tear these two down and put a parking lot up for that structure across the street. It is permitted, parking lots are permitted in the CC district. It would be a land development. It would come back through for a review process for your stormwater management and your review of the actual, of the parking lot construction.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion and a second for this demolition request?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
This is outside of the historic district, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is outside of it.
I'm not sure if Mr. Jardi heard you. Outside.
You know, you look at the address and it's, and the house, and I just was wondering, this is outside of the historic district?
No.
It's not?
It's not in the historic district.
That's what I just asked.
Yeah, no. I'm sorry, it is not, no. All these are reviewed or not. This is at the end, Vine Avenue, Seventh, I think it's Seventh Street. Seventh Avenue is the cutoff line, okay? This is definitely west of that area. Yep. There was one that was, two weeks ago, we came in for a demolition, it was on Third. That was a real, that was a cutout, it was just right outside the historic district. So this is the same one. Yeah, I'd be in trouble if I tore down a historic building. Ms. Mealy would not be very happy with me.
I know. That's why I looked over there.
Hey, man, I'm just one of several.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Mealy.
So both of these are planned simply to be parking for, it looks like, the Dollar Store slash Habitat slash everything across the street?
No.
Or what's?
No, it's, is the address directly across the street?
Oh, directly across Vine.
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, understood. Okay, sorry, I wasn't quite picking that up, but I see now. Okay, all right, excellent. Thank you.
Question that I have, then, is, is this in, you may know off the top of your head, is this in the or outside the combined sewer CSO?
I can't answer that question.
Okay, let's assume it is for a second.
Yep.
And if it is part of a combined, outside the, basically be part of our MS4 permit area.
You're saying, is this outside the institutional district?
No, is this outside the CSO for a stormwater plan, for stormwater purposes?
I would say probably not, but I can verify that for you.
Also, if it is in the CSO.
Right.
Okay, if it is in the CSO, then my next comment is irrelevant. But if it is outside the CSO with future development for parking moving forward, it could be eligible for a BMP.
Correct.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. And if it was eligible for a BMP, then it might be a good opportunity, then, for the city to work with the developer to think of parking in terms of permeable surfaces, so that both they might benefit from relief in future stormwater fee assessment, good for them, and good for the city in terms of working towards our credits.
Right.
For sediment reduction, as far as our MS4 permit. So I just bring that up so that we can all begin thinking about every potential project as an opportunity to have that discussion. And, yeah, that'd be great. Clearly, if it's part of the CSO, encouraging them to have that conversation with the sewer authority itself would be useful. But in terms of the city, the partnership between the city and the local township on that issue, you know, having a permeable surface, having rain gardens built into that process could save the developer money in the long run, and so should get their attention, and definitely would benefit the city in the long run as well, so should have ours. So just wanted to bring that up. Any further comments on the request for demolition for 1270 Vine Avenue? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that request for demolition is approved. Next item on the agenda is demolition request for 1264 Vine Avenue. Mr. Jardi.
Yes, 1264 Vine Avenue is located in a CC Commercial District. The structure was used as a single-family dwelling and is currently vacant. Grass will be planted after demolition. Future development of this lot with 1270 Vine Avenue for a parking lot, did I mess this up?
This is just the other property, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, okay. Four lot commercial business at 316 Rose Street.
Is there a motion and a second to approve this demolition?
So moved.
Hearing motion and a second. Additional comments or questions?
Yes.
Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that request for demolition is approved. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for 303 East Church Street. Mr. Jardi.
Yes, you have a certificate of appropriateness request for Mr. Michael C. Marone for the building located at 303 East Church Street. The building is presently a mixed-use structure. The owner requests to paint the body of the building a light gray. It's called online, and the window trims and door trims to be a, I guess, you want to pronounce that tire color? Black? I have attached a photo of the buildings and samples. If you copy black and gray, then it's mountain, well, easy to ask if other people have passed them around. Copy them on a copy or they don't. Just so St. House will know that this project was started, I stopped them from work two weeks ago due to the weather. If I didn't allow them to continue, they probably would not have been able to paint it this year because they would have started tomorrow to paint it, and November's not the time you want to paint a building. These are colors that are very similar to what Mr. Marty picked for his buildings, the black and the white he had. This is a black and a light gray. The gray, if you notice, on the building and the white he has are very similar in color. So I did allow them to go ahead and continue to paint. They're understanding they realize that you do have the right to change that. I just did not want them to be held up from, it's in the central, it's in our central business, it's in our gateway area. It matches Mr. Marty's building nicely, the colors, so that's why I allowed them to continue.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the certificate of appropriateness?
So, second.
Hearing motion and a second. Before I ask for other questions, my only question really is, and I think you handled that well, by the way, in terms of their needs, and as you and I spoke about, you know, this gives us another opportunity and maybe another reminder that we need to continue to educate the people that would be covered by certificates of appropriateness, both in CBD and historic district. So we can keep working on that.
Right.
That's been an ongoing challenge for all of us.
Right. We try to catch them as early as we can. Some people are thinking they're painting, they don't really think they're in a certain district, they just decide they're going to paint their building. And if this was in the middle of summer, I would have stopped, and they wouldn't have been able to paint until they came through you.
Right.
But again, it was the time of the year, and I just didn't feel proper.
And of course, please pass along at least mine and maybe all of council's appreciation for the ongoing investment, especially given how all of the community has prioritized economic development in the Gateway District. So it's just a matter of going through process.
Right.
So my only other question, then, is who looks at this color of gray and thinks, oh, we should call that online?
Yes, I couldn't figure that one out either. I was.
And I'll note that it's a Sherwin-Williams color, so we should pass that question along to the Sherwin-Williams, not the building owner. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate of appropriateness is approved.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is accept for filing. We have the Public Works Committee meeting minutes of July 31st and September 11th, 2018. The Controller's Report of September 2018. ERC meeting minutes of October 16th, 2018. The Veterans Park, Veterans Memorial Park Commission meeting minutes of July 2nd, August 9th, and September 10th, 2018. The financial audit of 2017. The September financial report of 2018, and the Bureau of Codes December 2017 and January 2018 reports. Can I have a motion and a second to accept these for filing?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Are there comments or questions? Hearing none, actually, let me make a comment, and this has become a bit of an annual comment around the financial audit that we received. And I'll hold it up so others can see what we're talking about. We're required, under all kinds of requirements, to do an outside audit. This audit's done, as it has been, by Baker Tilly to exacting standards of the accounting industry and of federal law and all of that. And so there's a lot of very useful and important information in here that I know that the city administration, especially Financial Department, the Finance Department, works and deals with for, really, the whole year, and that especially our Finance Committee digs into a bit at their appropriate time. There's one part that I think continues to receive not enough attention, and, but yet is a growing concern, and it continues to grow as a concern, and that is the burden that has been passed to us, that we deal with, but not entirely well, and that we are passing on to the next generations, and that is post-employment benefits other than pensions, or what's known as OPEB costs. Namely, well, let me read a bit. "The city provides post-retirement medical, prescription, drug, and vision coverage for fire and police employees who retire with at least 12 years of service with their respective departments and have attained the age of 50." Okay, that's neither good nor bad. It is something that exists. "And life insurance benefits to all employees who retire with at least 12 years of service, it's years of service. The city provides post-retirement healthcare benefits for RVT employees who retire and have attained an age-plus-years-of-service amount equal to or greater than 85 years and have attained the age of 55. The cost of such medical, vision, and life insurance coverage for retirees and spouses are primarily funded through annual appropriations from the city's general fund and enterprise fund." And I'm assuming that's been the case for many decades. But, jumping ahead, and I'm on page 63 for anybody who happens to want to find this later "The contribution requirements of plan members in the city are established and may be amended through negotiations between the city and the respective unions." And here's a particularly important part. "The plan is funded on a pay-as-you-go basis. Eligible retiree premiums are paid annually to fund the healthcare benefits provided to current retirees. Retirees are currently not required to contribute to the plan. The city made estimate contributions to the plan just for healthcare, et cetera, for retirees, not for current employees, but its totals in 2017, $3,415,996." I'm ballparking this in my head, about 15% more or less of our general fund budget. Less than 15%, but that's the right ballpark. And I apologize for the boring accounting language in all of this. Some people might not find it boring. Most people do. Going on to page 64. "The annual required contribution of the employer, known as ARC, represents a level of funding that paid on an ongoing basis is projected to cover the normal costs each year and amortize any unfunded actuarial liabilities over a period not to exceed 30 years." Here's the punchline. Our annual required contribution, if we were to actually fund it, would be $9.7 million. Our pay-as-you-go system actually funds $3.4 million. So our net OPEB, and remember, that's the post-retirement benefits other than pension, which, by the way, is in quite good shape. The report here says our pensions are funded between 88% and 91% fully funded. That's better than you hear from almost anyone else.
Exactly.
But that's the good news. This is, this is the difficult news. In other words, our increase in net OPEB obligations increased by $5.6 million over the course of 2017. So that means that we have a net OPEB obligation at the end of 2017, almost a year ago now, that's unfunded, of $43.6 million, or nearly twice our annual operating budget for the entire city. Somebody will have to pay that bill. And I will argue, one, we can't pay it now. There's no way we can tackle that this year, next year, or in the next five years. But we can start making progress on it this year, or next year, over the next five years, especially as we, and I think we will, approach a fully funded pension plan. And once our pension plan is fully funded, then we can begin to not allocate those resources to anything else but the commitments that we've made to our retirees. So that's part one. We should develop a plan to figure out how to get ourselves dug out of the hole of the commitments we've made to our retirees. Part two of the point I want to make is, every time we open and consider and think about the kinds of benefits that are included in our union contracts across all of the unions, we need to consider that legacy cost that we're going to be passing on to the next generation. Did this make sense? Was this the right thing to do? I don't know 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago. But I do know that we're paying and we're looking at a big bill today. And so we have to take that into account and not pass it on even further into the And there's a lot of ways that we can begin to knock away at that $43.6 million unfunded liability. And of course, I feel like a broken record because I've been saying that for six or seven or eight years, but we're finally getting close on the pensions, and maybe it'll be time next year or in the very near future to begin to chip away at this liability as well and not add to it. So, thank you for listening. Ms. Mealy.
Further comments in that area? What we, what we had discussed last year during the audit presentation from Baker Tilly What we, what we had discussed last year during the audit presentation from Baker Tilly and discussed again this year is that beginning in 2019, for our 2018 year, the city will have to show our OPEB obligations unfunded, our unfunded liability on our balance sheet, which is to say that we go from being probably already somewhat in the negative to being a further, I believe the estimate was something like 100, it was a minimum of $116 million, but it was probably more like 125 by the time you added in some actuarial things that hadn't been accounted for running into 2018. So there, it seemed as though, obviously, there are a number of municipalities, a large number of municipalities, that are not funding their post, their other post-employment benefit liabilities, which means that there will be a large number of municipalities that also have a hugely negative number on their accrual sheets. And, and all of, as you note, those unfunded liabilities have been addressed in our audit for as long as I can remember and I'm certain for far longer than that. So it's not as though it wasn't already transparent to anyone who cared to look that we were not funding our other post-employment benefits. That said, now it will be right there in bold print. And it's hard to say if, whether or not that might impact ratings by things like standards and pores. The secondary thing that I should point out is I had, I had been under the impression, I think I'd sort of glossed over it a little bit in my own head by assuming that everyone, of course, dealt with other post-employment benefits in the same way the city does. That is to say that all the municipalities across the state of Pennsylvania are doing full retirement for, for all of their employees who achieve a certain level of seniority are doing, are doing, excuse me, full healthcare and vision and possibly family or whatever. And it frankly had not occurred to me that there might be dramatic differences in the ways in which municipalities across the state of Pennsylvania and across the country had chosen to deal with it, but Baker Tilly simply outlined a handful of options, one of which was, of course, whether or not you provide family coverage versus individual coverage after retirement. Another was that many municipalities require retirees to shift to Medicare once they hit 65. That is to say that it doesn't necessarily mean that by negotiating to end providing healthcare to retirees at a certain point, we're leaving them with no healthcare. But we could simply require them to take advantage of the healthcare that is provided in the country after, after the age of 65. Anyway, just a few observations for ways we may begin to control that expense moving forward, but I do appreciate that if we can achieve the threshold of being fully funded on our pensions, it would be wise, of course, to divert what it seems to me is several million dollars at this point that we're paying out annually to catch up to being fully funded directly into the OPEB expenditures and not to, you know, try and use it and do something wild and crazy like pay streets. But, thank you for the observation.
Absolutely, and let me be clear. I believe that we should live up to the commitments that have been made. I'm not suggesting that given the agreements that we've entered into in the past, that, that our employees do not deserve these benefits. They do. They've worked hard for the city, represented the city well, and have earned what was committed to, maybe not with a good decision behind it, but it was a decision. And so you live up to your commitments. The question is, then, do you work to change those commitments so that you can make those commitments more sustainable over time for the next set of employees, the next generation of taxpayers as well? So I didn't want to leave it saying that we should pull, anyone thinking that I was arguing that we should pull the rug out of the people who've worked and represented the city very well over a long time period. Ms. Allison.
Just a couple of other points on that subject. Having it on the balance sheet will make it more accessible for the public to see where we're at. It's not hidden in the back of a report somewhere. And Mr. Nichols can probably speak to this some, as far as affecting the bond rating. They seem to think that the bond issuance process would, all that's disclosed, nobody's going to loan a lot of money without knowing our actual liabilities. It's not like we hid it and that was never transparent to the bond rating companies and those who are lending the money, correct?
Well, what you said was, was accurate that it's going to be put on the balance sheet, so you're going to see that as a liability. So when a financial institution takes a look, you know, and S&amp;P, for example, looks at, you know, our financials, you know, that's stated there and may have a slight impact. I mean, they recognize that now, but now it's actually going to be on the balance sheet. So it does, it would look like more of an adverse problem than, I mean, it just didn't happen, it's always been there, but now it's stayed in the balance sheet, but.
So it does take.
You know, we had a very high rating from S&amp;P, A-plus rating, one of the highest in the Commonwealth, and, you know, whether that rating would be impacted slightly, probably will be an impact, but that's going to be an impact to all third-class cities or any government entities that have that post-retirement benefits, so. But it gives a more accurate picture about liabilities and things like that.
That's the important thing.
Right.
I don't think, in the end, our rating is the most important thing. Most important thing is to be transparent and real about where we're at, and I think that's why this is important, that it's disclosed like this for everybody, because I've heard it mentioned by other financial experts nationally that this area across local, state, and obviously the federal government is really possibly the next big problem that may affect economies across this country, the economy of this nation as well as worldwide, because we're such a big player there, if levels of government who are the ones that are most negligent in this area. Because, obviously, when these agreements were first made, healthcare wasn't that expensive. It was, it was cheap back in the day. But in the private sector, businesses had the latitude to drive a hard bargain and began to, when they saw the landscape chaining, changing, the private sector was able to address it and say, you know, this isn't going to be tenable anymore, we have to change this formula. And, and they have somewhat of a handle on it and it's still hard for them to manage. But governments being involved in, it's, it's a business in some ways, but in a lot of ways it isn't. So we're restrained and constrained and, and move slowly under the best circumstances. So government has been slow to add, address this whole area, but it needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. So we're actually taking a step in the right direction because it accurately depicts publicly and transparently the finances that we really face. Although we're doing a good job, a lot better job than a lot of other municipalities across the state, which, when you look at our situation, that should keep you up at night, knowing, knowing that this is one of the, the better-case scenarios, so. That's all I have to say about that.
But again, it's what's different from pensions. Pensions are here mandated to fund your unfunded liability, where this is just a disclosure of a potential liability, but it's not required to be funded.
Right.
Because you can pay as you go. Now, I think it just, I mean, obviously, if you're able to fund something like that, then you're in a better financial position, so, you know, that's always a good thing to do. The downside of this is putting it on the balance sheet and showing the financial institutions that that's there, then your bond rating might be lower, and then anytime your bond rating is lower, that means the interest rates that they're going to offer you are going to be a little higher. So, you know, there is, there is a slight impact, there's no doubt about it.
And maybe that, that impact would make you hesitate to borrow some more, so that may be a good thing in that respect.
Sure. Other comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, other comments, Mr. Henderson?
Doesn't it just seem obvious, though? Okay, so the financial institutions look at us and say, oh, maybe we shouldn't lend to them like we have been because they aren't making their obligations. I mean, that seems, and I know it's more complicated than that, but let's just bring it down to the real world where we all live. We should be more concerned about that number than any bond rating or the possibility to borrow more. You know, let's, you know, let's stop with that altogether if we can. I know, I, I'm aware there, that's unreasonable expectations, that is, if we maintain what we are continuing to do. It seems obvious to me that we need to stop making some of these promises that we are. We need to address that seriously and urgently instead of just continuing to say, well, it is what it is. It doesn't have to be. And I think we need to be urgent about that.
Well, again, it was always known in the financial statements, so it was, it was there.
Sure.
And it was recognized. I think the idea was by putting it on the balance sheet, it made more of an impact to local governments that it is an issue and you may want to address it differently than, instead of a pay-as-you-go method, so. You know, it's.
I'm not complaining about necessarily the way that, you know, the Finance Department is, is managing things. I'm just simply saying that we ought to take this as the warning that it is. And we ought to respond to it.
Yeah, and to build on what Mr. Henderson said there, maybe the, I mean, whether or not it affects our, our bond rating, this, instead of being, as it has been, because this is the appropriate place until the rules have changed, instead of being on page 63 and 64 of a document we see once a year, it's on our balance sheet. It will remind all of us.
Yes.
Of this liability, of a $3.4 million cost that really ought to be paid at this point, $9 million a year.
No.
And what really should have occurred is when the council and mayor of 1960, or 1970, or 2, 1980, or 1990, or whatever year it happened to be, said, all right, we're going to sign off on this agreement to offer these benefits, they should have started setting aside money at that time so that we have a fund built up that helps to fund that full $9.7 million of liability this year so that the, the balance doesn't grow. Now, we were, I'm agreeing with Mr. Nichols, we were mandated to do that for our pensions by the state some number of years ago. And because we were forced to do the right thing and because we've done a good job with it, and I want to come back to that in a second, we've actually gotten at the end of 2017, 91 to, 88 to 91% funded across our three pension funds and done the right thing. Well, it turns out doing the right thing shouldn't be forced on you either.
Yeah.
Let's do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. And so I think having that reminder in front of us, do we do this thing that we've already committed to or do we commit to something new? Well, live up to your commitments.
Well, keep in.
Before you do something.
Well, keep in mind, the pension came in the 1980s. Before that, it was, you know, you just provide as much money as you felt you could put into some sort of a pension fund.
And so what was our?
Then Act 205 came about where the state said, well, here's money, we're going to give you money.
Okay.
To help you out.
Okay.
But if you're going to take the money, then you've got to.
And before we got the money.
Then you gotta, you gotta pay the mortgage if you're going to get the money.
And before we got the money for Act 205, what would you say our percent funded level was?
Um.
Less or more than 91%?
Well, back in the early 80s, Mayor LaCasey was very progressive at the time because he realized that there was an issue and he started putting extra money in.
Okay.
And that was the first time that, you know, I experienced that there was a real administration effort to, you know, look forward. And I think that's why the government gap, you know, is now putting on the balance sheet because they want to make it obvious that maybe, you know.
We should do it too.
It's going to grow and maybe it's just a reminder, as you said, that, you know, maybe it needs to be addressed, you know.
Right. And I think that's an excellent summary then of where we stand and where we, we can be progressive in looking forward on this next problem. By the way, just as an aside, we, as council knows, we received a letter from our financial advisor, Bill Warbeck and Deb Schneider, who oversees the CS McKee, who does our investments for our pension funds. And, you know, if you've been following the stock market, you know that October's been a rough month after an otherwise pretty decent year, and so you might wonder how our 88 to 91 range that we had achieved at the end of 2017 might be doing. And I don't have that exact figure here because it's not what the letter was addressed, but I can report that the pension boards, all three of them, some of which, we don't serve on all three, some of those are controlled entirely by others. But several years ago, there was a new investment strategy that in essence took seriously the management of risk in, in the investment of our portfolios so that volatility wouldn't hit us as hard. And, and so the letter that you have all read, I'll summarize by saying, hey, there was a hit that the whole stock market in the country took at the beginning of October and, and we saw more or less a 7% decline in the stock market. And, and you can't avoid all of the decline, but because of the risk-conscious strategy that the three pension boards took a couple of years ago, instead of falling 7% or more, a lot of people fell a lot more in that decline at the beginning of October, ours only fell by 4.75%. Well, that's not necessarily to be celebrated, it fell. Having less money is not good, but having the right strategy made it a lot less hard to bear. And that was only the most, the, 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 the stock part of our pension fund. The other part of our pension fund, which if, off the top of my head, I think still represents 40% of our fund or so, only lost about 1%. And, and he also said that, and since then, the whole market has recovered as has our fund, so we haven't made up all of those losses, but we've made up a larger share of the losses than the whole market had of. And had we not gone through the effort as, as pension boards, as a community, to figure out the right strategy, we'd be much worse off position than we are today. And we can hope that then in the last two months of the year that we recover back to the beginning of the year, back to at least that 88 to 91% range that we were at and maybe better by the time we get the audit this time next year. And, and so I, given our discussion, I wasn't going to talk about this, I really appreciated this explanation from Mr. Warbeck and Ms. Schneider because it helped us to understand how, how our carefully thought-through investment strategy has helped to reduce what that burden is going to be as we're working our way back to 100% funded, for the first time, at least in my, whatever it's been, 11 years on council and very likely for 20 or 30 years before that.
So with that said, as I mentioned before, there's three parts to the MMO and that's your normal cost, which you would have to put in to stabilize the fully funded position, the administrative cost, and your mortgage payment.
Mm-hmm.
So once you become 100% fully funded, that mortgage payment goes away.
And that was, it's about two or three million dollars, right?
So then, so then, yes, and so then if you do an actuarial study of your, your post, you know, retirement benefits, then you, they would say, okay, here's your normal cost, here's your administrative cost, and here's your mortgage.
Mm-hmm.
And you could set what the mortgage would be, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, and then they'd say, okay, if you want to fully fund it in 25 years, here's your mortgage payment per year.
Right.
And, you know, they would set aside possibly part of that $2 million to pay that mortgage.
Yep, absolutely, and, and, and that would be a good, good jumpstart to our problem because we're paying $3.4 million in this year's cost, but we're accruing beyond that $5.6 million in added liability. And so if we could put two or three million dollars towards that, wouldn't solve the problem, but man, it would make a big dent, wouldn't it? So here's hoping that in, by the time the MMO comes out next year, that we will be very, very close to being able to accomplish that shift to then getting whole on OPEBs. Thanks for engaging in this discussion. Are there any?
If I could just revisit one other point, that the $9 million of unfunded liability, that's essentially a snapshot, correct, of the employees that we have now.
And the retirees.
And the retirees, but the current employees projecting out.
I'm not sure what formula you used, but there would be the current employee census, longevity, you know, certain things, sort of a broad brush look. If you really want to refine the number, then you really need to do a full actuary study of, of where that is to determine.
Because there are a lot of variables.
Yes. So on the pension side, we do much more in-depth analysis or actuary, that is. So if you really want to get a true snapshot of the cost.
And even, even then, there would be some assumptions built in because we know exactly what we've committed to in terms of defined benefits. We don't know exactly how healthcare costs will, healthcare insurance premiums will increase over the next 30 years.
Right. And that $3 million you mentioned, it's not what we pay out on the pay-as-you-go method, it's far less than that. I mean, it's, I think that's the fully funded number, if you were, or maybe that's the calculation with the mortgage payment or something like that.
No, it says, is for the pay-as-you-go plan, the city made estimated contributions to the plan of $3.4 million.
Yeah, well, that's not, because the total payment's only $6 million, so I don't know.
The evaluation's done every two years.
Yeah, it could be an estimate or something like that. That's not what we pay out.
This is the best information we have available, so.
No, I understand that, I'm not sure what, how that, that number is derived, what it includes, so.
Sure.
I'll find out, let you know.
Thank you. Ms. Allison. Okay. Other comments or questions? By the way, we're on except for filing. Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes. The, those items are accepted for filing. Next item on the agenda is announcements. We will be.
We will be having a executive session immediately following this meeting on the purpose of negot-- for the purpose of negotiation. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November-- Tuesday. I just want to make sure everybody hears that distinctly. Tuesday, November 20th, at 7:30 PM here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings, well, first, an announcement on Monday, November 12th. City Hall is closed in observance of Veterans Day. Tuesday, November 13th, at 3:30 PM is ERC meetings.
We will be having.
Okay. At 7:00 PM is Citizens Corps. On Wednesday, November 14th, at 11:30 AM is the Redevelopment Authority. Thursday, November 15th, at 10:30 AM is zoning hearing board. 4:00 PM is the Board of Health. Also that day, there will be a blood drive in the Sackler Room. On Tuesday, November 20th, at 1:00 PM, Finance Committee; 2:30 PM, Public Works; 3:30 PM, Public Safety; 6:30 PM, Harb. And as I said, we might as well stay all day because then at 7:30, we'll have our regularly scheduled council meeting. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there any further comments from members of council? Mr. Anderson?
I just wanted to offer a kind of a response. Obviously, our city has been through quite a bit this last year, and with the vote, the election, just this week. And I wanted to offer just my take and my response, and perhaps a call to action as well. The recent referendum questions and responses should drive elected officials to thorough Why did both the original questions to study the charter and the home rule options receive over sixty support a year ago? Now, after the reports of both commissions and after the local discussions and debates, why then did 64 percent or more reject both proposals a few days ago? I would caution my fellow elected officials against misinterpreting these responses. I think it would be foolish and arrogant to interpret this vote as a wholesale satisfaction with the performance of our current government. I believe the vote a year ago displays a majority dissatisfaction with the current function of Williamsport government, and the vote this week displays a majority dissatisfaction with the two options proposed as solutions to that dysfunction. So where does that leave us today? With the same dissatisfaction of current governmental function and the elimination of two proposed remedies, are voters saying that we should stop seeking solutions and stop pursuing any change at all? I don't believe so. The voters have evaluated the current form of government and determined that the change they desire is possible within this form. How then will we, the elected officials of Williamsport, respond to the voters who have placed us here? I believe we should recognize the calls of the voters for more transparency, more professionalism, more efficiency, better long-term planning, and the elimination of political games. And I believe we should do what's in our power within this form of government to affect change in these areas. So I call on my fellow elected officials to seriously consider developing city ordinances with stronger requirements for professionalism and for transparency in order to affect better efficiency. Perhaps term limits for all elected officials should at least be considered. Increased accountability for appointed bureaucracy should be explored and implemented. And I believe a code of ethics for all government offices, departments, and elected officials should be approved, including an ethics commission of non-elected citizens for its enforcement. As I've stated many times before, what Williamsport needs is the sincere determination of its elected officials to embrace the accountability built into its design. Perhaps now is the time to improve the accountability measures within the design of our government, but without question, this is the time for all elected officials, in the spirit of our nation's forefathers and countless American soldiers, to sacrifice self-ambition, self-promotion for the benefit of Williamsporters we may never meet, both in this generation and in many more to come. This will take courage, integrity, honesty, sacrifice, and determination. And I believe, when we admit our flawed self-preserving tendencies and prioritize service toward others, that we can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, members of council? Hearing none, Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Allison.
We have a young man in the audience tonight, a boy scout, who was here to observe local government working and working towards his governmental badge, correct? I think you saw some interesting things tonight, but I would take special note of Mr. Henderson's comments about government and how it interacts with people and what people expect of it, because I think he put it very well and very succinctly. But we applaud you for your efforts and in the progress you're making towards becoming a better citizen. I think you're a very good citizen, and you're trying to improve, and that's more of what we need in this country. So I'm very pleased to have you here tonight.
And Ms. Allison, I can tell you that, in my observations, this young man, Gabe, is absolutely a good citizen. I've seen him both grow for a couple of years in scouting and also in the marching millionaires, and he's a fine representative of our city, and a friend of my son and my daughter. I can also tell you, as a recipient of the merit badge, I earned that one that he's working on tonight, I earned that one, God, thirty years ago, I suppose. And I use some of that knowledge and those skills and those thoughts and ideas that I learned back then, to this day, in this room. So you won't remember the details, you might not even yet know what the acronym WERDA stands for, but hopefully some of these broader lessons and, as Mr. Allison said, some of the message of Mr. Henderson's just gave us will stick with you for a long time. So you'll be a leader of your community for a long time to come in a lot of different ways, and I think you caught us on a pretty good night. They aren't all this smooth and positive, but hopefully some of these lessons will stick with you going forward. So welcome, and you're welcome back anytime. Bring all the rest of them next time. Mayor, you or your administration have any comments?
Just wanted to bring up, back in April of this year, second meeting in April, that's when Mr. Logue came in for the Discovery Workshop building, and I know that Stephanie has a litter program right now, hopefully in front of council, to get individuals' money to fix buildings up. At that time in April, second meeting, it was a six-month extension of time not to tear the building down. That would have ended sometime second meeting in October. So presently, right now, the city council does not have an agreement with Herm Logan or-- and/or Dan Klingerman concerning the Discovery Workshop building. So my suggestion would be, if you wish to extend your time, someone should got ahold of Mr. Logue and request an extension of time, because at this point, I believe, under the ordinance, the way it was written, Mr. Logue, if he wishes, could come in and request his demolition permit. So I don't want to make this a long meeting tonight, but it might be something that you want to look at. He hasn't done that, I know you've been in contact, but I think to do it legally, we need to readdress it and bring it up in front of a meeting.
Absolutely. And let me-- I don't know how much lately you've been updated.
I have not at all.
And I credit--
We should talk tomorrow.
Sure.
But, yeah.
I credit Ms. Mealy for keeping work on the matter, and I think we've made real progress. And maybe we do need to take formal action at some point, but I think that there is a-- I don't know any better terms, so I'll call it a gentleman's agreement, but it includes Ms. Mealy, too.
Gentle people's agreement.
Gentle people's agreement, there we go. That, given the progress that is-- has occurred, that everyone is-- can proceed forward, assuming progress continues to occur, without needing to formally extend, or, for that matter, moving forward with a demolition.
The only reason I'm bringing this up is because I've had, which I will not mention names, I've had individuals requesting what we're doing with the building. So technically, if I don't have a formal agreement, then I've got to force Mr. Logue to do something with this building.
Okay, oh, I see.
You understand what I'm saying? Because if I don't do that, then anybody's going to say to me, "Well, if I don't have to fix-- he doesn't fix his building, why do I have to fix mine?" I can say, "I have an agreement between council and Mr. Logue. They're looking on someone to develop the building."
Understand.
Very similar to where it was held up because of the demolition problem they had.
Understand.
Right.
And I think the potential for an agreement that would satisfy that is imminent.
Yep.
And so maybe by the time we meet next, we'll have that solution in place.
Right. But otherwise, you can also refer their questions to me, Joe, if you'd like, just give them my email address.
And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to call you so I know what's going on.
Oh, please, no, absolutely. I would appreciate it if you would.
Thank you.
In fact, I'm sorry, I didn't keep you in the loop, it should have occurred to me. But also, if it is easier for you to say, "Why don't you talk to this chick," then, you know, just give me my email.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing our attention to that particular concern. It's not something I had thought about. Any other comments? All right. Any comments from the general public? As you're aware, please come name and address for the record. Three minutes on a matter of city business.
Yeah, Ralph Keller, 203 U Street. Thank you, Dr. Williamson. With the holiday season coming, I've just talked to Bonnie about various activities. The city is planning for the holiday, and I'd like to bring the often forgotten venue of the Will Huffman Toy Train Expo to everyone's attention. If I'd like to quote his sons, Bruce and Eric, Will Huffman created the expo as a way of celebrating the magic and nostalgia of toy trains. It was his vision for the expo to be a gift for the community, for children of all ages. And it's exactly what it is. It's about two dozen office volunteers, we get nothing out of this. We do it for the fun, and the fun of watching people enjoy it. This has been going on, this will be our 28th year that we've done this. It's become very popular. Typically, we've been getting between 1,500 and 2,000 visitors come through over the weekend. The show, if anyone's not familiar, this is not a typical train show, buy, sell, trade. The exhibitors will be having all-running, operating layouts for the enjoyment. People can come, see, play, touch, et cetera. As far as the dates, it will be next weekend in conjunction with Victorian Christmas, Saturday, the 17th, 10 to 4, and Sunday, the 18th, from 11 to 4. We hope everyone will come. It will be in two locations again this year, at the Old Park Home, now Park Place, Forth and Campbell. We've outgrown that, fortunately, so we also have exhibits at the Tabor Museum of the Historical Society. You'll see everything there that you can imagine, current and past. It manufactures all sizes, all gauges, and it's a lot of fun. Personally, I will be running trains from as early as 1926 up through current. So we hope the weather's nice, and we'd ask everybody, please come and support us. It's $2 for adults, children are free, and the money goes to charity. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I was just talking about that with my wife, in fact. Are there other comments from the general public?
I live at 619 First Avenue. I'm elected committeeman from the 12th Ward. I had a question for council and the administration. I noticed there's some roof damage to this building. Is anybody aware of that? You are aware of it? You are aware of it? Okay, I was wondering, because the one piece is gone and the other piece is ready to come off.
We are aware of the damage.
The-- on the tower, right? Okay. Because it looks pretty dangerous, and it looks like a 100-pound piece of metal can fly five, six stories. I mean, you know. Okay. I figured somebody had to be, I figured it'd be you, Joe. Somebody was complaining the other day, and I had to remember myself, when I was a kid, bus service was 24/7. Now, we're always being touted at what a wonderful system we have, and they are nice buses, and they do run efficiently and ecologically soundly, I guess, with gas, but we don't have 24/7 bus service like is expected in a municipal area. And it impacts people with jobs, and it impacts people with-- I don't know, but I'm sure somewhere along the line, at least one DUI could have been avoided by it, possibly, you know, or some other instance of problems, because you don't have transportation. So somebody ought to consider, I don't know, I'm sure you took it up before, but there's still people who would like to see 24/7 service, even if it's a smaller vehicle, you know, I mean, it's what you call municipal transit system, I think, normally. There are a lot of economic problems the city faces, and I'm curious if the city has ever done this, or if they could possibly think about doing something. From what I understand, statistics say there are 27 energy-producing states in the country, and only three don't have a severance tax, and we happen to be one of them. The severance tax other states use for their hospitals, streets, infrastructure, pensions, I'm sure, that you're so worried about. Maybe-- I've never heard council, and you can-- maybe you can tell me, Mr. Williamson, if your council's ever approached the legislature or anybody else as a city body, you know, or what-- if you even have an opinion on this, as council.
Just to be clear, we usually don't make the time. It's more of a listening to the community rather than a give and take in questions.
And that actually brings up my fourth question about responses from council. When I was younger, council would respond to you. Now, I don't know if it's due to the city solicitor, or due to worried about-- I think maybe I guess people have to come on the agenda if they want to ask questions and get responses. But I-- if you're going to run for council, if you run for any office, and somebody comes in and asks a question, I think the proper response would be either the answer to the question, or we have to investigate that, and if you come back, we'll be glad to give you an answer. I don't think we don't respond to questions is what people get elected for. Now, that might be something the city solicitor gets paid to do, but you're not paid, city appointees, you're elected officials. And I've had this happen before, all right? So in the future, I hope the response will be more like to the effect, we will look into this. We'll talk to maybe Wieland or legislator Everett or Yaw, who happen to be in the crux of this thing, you know? It's the old boom bus thing, I think, you know? There's a gold rush, they come in, they buy off all the politicians, and then when they're gone, they lay the mess. I remember the North Branch of the Susquehanna River being orange because the coal miners were gone, the companies were gone, and the public was left with it. So now we have things like severance taxes, and you-- I don't know if it's a political thing, I don't know if the Republicans more than Democrats, I don't know, but the Republicans actually have the Senate and the legislature up till recently, I guess, the governorship. So I don't know who's behind it. But I would like an answer, maybe next time I come in, if there's a possibility that council would look into something like this, as representing the hub of this region, literally.
And thank you for your comments, and I'm sure there'll be members of council, as we always do, be more than willing to engage you offline, you know, after the meeting. Are there any other comments or questions from the general public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Your motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.